All right, thank you. So today is May 19th, 2021, and the time is 5:07 PM. And I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Special Virtual Meeting. City Clerk, can I have a roll call?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council members Daniel, Damian.
Here.
Council member Monica Garcia.
Here.
Council member Paul Hernandez.
And at this moment, I'm making a motion to excuse Councilmember Hernandez. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. Continue, City Clerk.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Alejandra Avila.
Here.
And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you for that. And is there anybody looking to speak?
We have one speaker, Greg Tuttle. I'm going to defer to our deputy city clerk.
Great, thank you.
Clerk. Thank you, Mayor. Let me go ahead and dial him now.
Hello?
Hi, Mr. Tuttle. This is Mayor Estrada calling you from Baldwin Park. I believe you want to make a public comment?
Yes, I do.
All right, you have three minutes.
Okay. First of all, I want to make it crystal clear. This comments that I'm making has nothing to pertain to Mayor Estrada, our council member Danny Damian. This is about the three amigos that voted in this Baldwin Park crowd. It is going to screw the residents over by raising their rates, which we told you over a year ago, this would happen. And now you're trying to raise the 5.6% and be over what Edison's charging. And this is all due to another payoff, just like the payoffs that Tofoya does with all the council members there, the three amigos. We have a new PAC committee. As you noticed, they've been sending out flyers notifying everybody about the puppets. They're going to send flyers out to make citizens aware and watch their electricity bills. If you dare raise these rates up over Southern California Edison, your political careers are done. And you think I'm bluffing. I don't bluff. And with Pacheco, you saw where Pacheco's headed to federal prison. So I want to talk about a letter that I got from the city. That, well, you stopped sending the stupid cards out, but you sent a letter out not saying that it's a business to my business. You sent it just to my name and that you're going to be changing the program without my approval. And down at the bottom, oh, if you care to, you can opt out. And it's, it's going to change in June. You're giving me a one week time to do a changeover? You people are nuts. This program was a disaster from the beginning. You're losing money on it. You will continue to lose money on it. And if you don't get the city out of this, you're going to have the biggest problem ever because everybody's going to opt out of it. And when they opt out of it, you're going to be stuck with a bunch of electricity that you can't, you can't get rid of. Because all the people are going to opt out. This is way beyond, I cannot believe, a council. Because they couldn't raise the utility taxes on the, on the residents, they went and did this slick deal here. Most of the smart cities, the smart council members did not fall for this scam. And this is exactly what it is, is a scam. And you're telling the people, they have to call to tell the people, we don't want your service. That's not the way it's done. And I don't care how you say the state says that it can be done that way. It's illegal and it's going to cause another lawsuit, which your disastrous city attorney has cost the city millions of dollars in lawsuits. Is got to go. He should have never allowed this to go through either. But I'm sure he was on the take with it too, with both hands out and both feet out.
Mr. Tuttle, your time is up.
Pardon me?
Your, your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. City Clerk, is there anybody else looking to speak?
No, that is it.
Great, thank you. So at this moment, we will move on from public communications and close public communications. And I believe we have an open session, study session by Barbara Boswell for B, for BPRO.
Thank you, Mayor. I will be giving the presentation. When we scheduled this, Barbara thought it was going to be at seven o'clock, so she was not available. So I will go ahead and proceed. I'm going to bring up PowerPoint, get that started. Okay, thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. This is a presentation on Be Proud, the Baldwin Park owned utility. And following at seven o'clock, there will be a public hearing on this item also. Just a little history on Be Proud. It was implemented for residential customers in October 2020. We're currently in phase two, which is rolling out for small and medium commercial customers. And that is just starting. It should be noted that Be Proud is voluntary and any rate payer can opt out at any time in the program. I think within the first 30 days, there's no cost to opt out. After that, I believe there's a minimal charge of 50 cents to opt out. And that is basically following the California PUC regulations. We cannot do it another way. That is the procedure that is set in law by the state of California. Originally, Be Proud adopted rates in June 2020. Those were the same as Southern California Edison. Um, it should be noted currently that Southern California rates are higher, and that has been the case since February of this year. And, and what you'll see typically with CEA, CCAs is a lot of times the, the rates might leapfrog a little bit. Oftentimes Edison will raise the rates once or twice a year. Typically, the CCAs will only raise rates once a year. Market conditions have changed since June. Our initial projections have changed a little bit. Most of that is due to what we call the exit fees, and I'll talk about those in a little bit. But those are fees that Edison has gone to the Southern, the Public Utilities Commission to get imposed on our customers. It's actually not a fee that the city charges. It's a fee that Southern California Edison is charging our customers. Um, those exit fees that we talked about, those eliminate some of the customer savings that we have been able to experience so far. This is not unique to Be Proud. This is happening to all of the CCAs in the state of California. There's over 200 CCAs in the state of California, and they're growing, you know, monthly and yearly, that, that number is increasing. Um, typically, most CCAs see about 90% of their residents join. I think we were much closer. I think we were in between 90 and 100%. And CCAs have seen very little dropout rate due to minor increases in rates. And like I said, those rates can leapfrog. We, we might be higher for a few months. And in fall, Edison could raise their rates and be higher again. So I want to talk about the, sort of the rate structure. So when you get your electric bill, this generation rate, that is the rate that, for actually producing the actual electricity. That's like when you turn on your faucet, you get water out. The delivery charges, those are the cost of having the power lines across the streets and everywhere. That would be equivalent in a water company to having the pipes in the ground. So this generation rate, this is the only rate that Be Proud has control of. And you can see that our generation rate, .08 kilowatt hour is still less than the Southern California Edison rate. What is making our final rate, bottom line, about a penny more is the delivery, I'm sorry, the exit fee that Southern California Edison is charging our customers. We'll talk about that more later, and, and we're working on ways. Actually, that is going to go away with time. It's going to fade out after a few years. But we're actually working on ways with the state legislator to make it go away sooner. But I also want you to look at the bottom line rate, the 26 cent per kilowatt hour. Because even though we only have control over this eight cents per kilowatt hour, there are a lot of programs that we are going to be able to implement for our Be Proud customers. And they are going to experience savings. And when they do experience savings, in one case, up to a 20% savings for our care customers, it's going to be based on this 26% rate. So they're going to experience their savings on this entire bottom line rate, not just the amount that Be Proud charges. And that's one of the benefits of the programs. So let's talk about the exit fees. Right now, there's Senate Bill 612. It's moving through the Senate Committee and Senate Appropriations Committee. Seem like there's a lot of support for that. We're working with all of the CalChoice and all of the other CCA cities in the state to lobby for that bill. That bill is going to make the exit fee implementation more transparent and, and help us reduce that in the future. Baldwin Park submitted a letter of support. And then also, future exit fees will go down over the next few years, but these actions, we're, we're hoping to get through the state legislature. Will help those exit fees go down faster. The programs that I wanted to talk about, these are just a few of them coming up in the near future. And on the horizon, and like I said, these will be benefits for our customers to be able to save on their total bill, not just on the eight, the, the nine cents that the city, the Be Proud charges. There's some smart device pilot program for residents. It's going to be free and reduce costs of spark plug, spark, smart plugs, load measurement devices, and EV charger. So that's going to be rolling out in the near future. There's also a battery storage programs for businesses that they can store up to four hours on batteries and then be able to run their business off batteries. One, if there's a power outage, but two, they save money because they store up the batteries during the night when electricity is cheap. And then they use it during the day when it's hot and everybody's running their air conditioners. And then there's a disadvantaged community green tariff that's on the horizon. And if we can get that implemented, that's an additional 20% savings for all of the Be Proud care customers. Like I said, on the bottom line savings. So that's a huge savings. Even if we do still have the exit fees at that time, that will far offset the exit fees. So the other thing that we have going is we're looking at receiving ARPA funds. This is the American Rescue Act, and those are going to be available for disadvantaged communities to help provide rebates and scholarships to residents and to customers. So one thing I might suggest, that if we do at the public hearing, go ahead with the rate increase. We could look at an offset and a rebate to the customers in a somewhat equal amount using the ARPA funds. And with that, I, that's my presentation. Like I said, we will have the public hearing, and there will be room for more discussion and questions at that time. Any questions or discussion at this time?
Yeah, Shannon, I've got a couple of questions.
Yes.
Who is Barbara Boswell? Is she the one from the CCA or who is she?
Barbara is with CalChoice, and CalChoice is the umbrella organization that runs the administration and the purchasing of energy for all of the cities in our group. I believe there's Lancaster, Pomona. I think there's about seven cities now. Kathy is also on the line and would be able to help me there if, if, help me with the cities that are in that group, if the council wanted to know.
And so, so the presentation was basically this, this study session. Were we not going to go over the actual overview of the CCA with the tenure projection? Or was that going to be held off for a different time or? Because I didn't see any on this, on this study session, I didn't see anything for the tenure projection and what it's going to cost.
I did send it out to everybody in a separate package. And I think I might be able to pull it up if you give it, give me a.
So a couple of questions on, on this particular study session. How, so how many years before the exit fees actually go away? Do we have an estimate of that? Is it maybe three years, five years?
I think Kathy might be able to answer that. It phases out slowly, but it does go down significantly, significantly. I believe in the next three to five years.
Yes. So the way that the, the exit fee is set up, it's kind of a snapshot of the portfolio of energy contracts at that point in time when those customers left the utility and joined Be Proud. And so that, those contracts roll off, the longest would be usually about 10 years. So historically, what we've seen is that the PCIA drops significantly, usually getting very low at about year 10, if not going away. But it does drop every year, generally speaking. We don't have a crystal ball, but that's the way that it's designed, is to go down every year as those contracts roll off and are, are no longer delivering energy and sitting in the IOUs portfolio. And as Shannon mentioned, SB 612, one of the things that it will do is make that process more transparent and ensure that there is better management of those contracts in that energy portfolio.
Got it. And Shannon, for these programs that you mentioned, that may be a possibility to be rolled out, you, you said they will be rolled out in the, in the near future. What are we talking about? Are we talking about a year from now, three years from now, five years from now? When would we expect to roll these programs out?
I think I'll go ahead and let Kathy answer that one too.
So the first one on the horizon is the smart device pilot program. And that, we are actually looking at rolling out next month. It's, we'll be looking at giving 500 energy management devices free of charge to select customers of Be Proud. And then there'll be an additional 5,000 at a reduced cost if there are other customers interested. And then there will be 1,000 free plugin devices. These devices are all intended to help the customer monitor their electricity usage. And it actually looks at the, the load information down to the specific appliance. So you could see, is it my, you know, refrigerator? Is it my air conditioner? You could, you can monitor your energy usage by appliance during different times of the day and under different circumstances. And then you can react to that and thereby reducing your load. There will also be 25 electric vehicle chargers that will be handing out to Baldwin Park customers. And that will probably be about three months. We are hoping to get the, the other, the first two devices that I talked about in the hands of Baldwin Park residents next month. And it's a, it's a one-year program, and they'll be piloting this load reduction program on behalf of a a company that wants to roll this out statewide. So.
Got it.
Um, the other program, the battery storage program, we're looking, that will be over the next few months. And that again is a pilot program, and it will be no cost to Baldwin Park CCA customers, Be Proud customers. And those will go out to small commercial customers. And again, the intent of that is to help them manage their energy usage and to reduce their overall energy bill. And again, as Shannon mentioned earlier, the generation is about one-third of the customer bill. So these devices, by, by reducing the overall energy usage, they actually impact the entire bill. So it's, it's substantially more of an impact because it impacts the, the exit fees. It impacts the transmission and delivery as well as the generation. And then some of the other programs, the electric vehicle charging stations, we're working with consultants and also with SCE to get electric vehicle chargers out and installed in Baldwin Park. And then the, see, the other program, the one, the community solar program, that one's just like in the early stages. And that's run by the Public Utilities Commission, and that's aimed at assisting low-income customers, care in, care customers. So that one's a little bit farther down the path. It, it has to go through the CPUC approval process. And then we will be building an actual solar project to use to provide the energy to those customers. So that one's a little bit further down the path.
All right, thank you. And then Shannon, my last question, I don't know, I think this would probably be you that would answer this. For the ARP funds, using ARP funds for rebates, you mentioned these rebates would only go to more of a lower household incomes, correct?
So we haven't really got the final interpretations on the ARP funds, and there's still a lot of questions on it. We should know more in the next couple of weeks. It's very likely that the rebate could go to all of the Be Proud customers, not just the customers.
And then if rates were to increase to offset the expenses that we're going to be facing as a city for this program, if this particular rate increase of 5.6%, is this going to help us with the operating costs for year 2022? Or for, how many years is this going to help us offset those expenses?
So I was able to pull up the slide that you had asked about. That is the tenure projection. And let me make that larger for everybody to see. So this, this, and again, this is a projection, and this is assuming that we match the Edison rates as opposed to a small increase. And that shows that we experienced a deficit in the years 2022 and 2023, and a little bit in 2024. So in the outer years, we start coming ahead, making money that could be reinvested into the community. Obviously, we need to set aside some for reserves. And part of the issue is, you know, this is a startup company. We don't have reserves right now. Had we been operating like Lancaster for a number of years and had a large reserve, we could possibly not consider not dropping the rates and using the reserves for a couple of years. Because it's a startup, and like most startup businesses, there's a lot of investment in the beginning. And it really takes time to get it going. Right now, we're purchasing a lot of energy for future years. So we're making investments for the future that we will be able to return to the community.
So Shannon, I have a question regarding this projection here. And I have a projection from March 2nd, which literally is less than three months ago. And I had a projection of 1.1 million 573,006.01 for year 2022. And then I have 1,112,437 for 2023 and 366,661 for year 2024, which totaled 3,052,699 for those three years. This projection here, why did it change so drastically in three months? We went from, in three years, 3,352,699 to now 4,593,229. Why are the projections so off in three months, in a three-month period?
So I think that projection you're looking at was, was done back in probably January, February. And it might have been based on old Edison rates. Also, energy costs are fluctuating. Right now, they're on the increase. Kathy, I'm not sure if you can add any other.
Yeah. For that. We, we like to say that this is kind of a snapshot in time. There are many variables that impact what goes into this document. It's a very fluid document. So you, you know, what you're looking at are what they call forward energy curves. And pricing is, it's based on, on market variables in the energy and the gas world. And we've seen some things that have caused the forward, that forward pricing curve to go up significantly. One of them was the storm that was in Texas. Even though it's another state, it kind of, it rattled the energy world a little bit. You know, when you have weather events like we saw last summer, that'll sometimes have an impact. So, you know, and, you know, we've kind of, we've, we've been through this a number of years. Right now, the rate projections are up significantly. We don't, and again, I want to emphasize, we, you know, we, we can look back at history and make guesses, but we certainly don't have crystal balls for the future. But, you know, we do expect that pricing will, will, will come back down as we get through the summer. You know, hopefully, we won't have the heat events that we saw last year. So anyway, that's, that's, that's the energy market. And then as Shannon talked about the exit fees, you know, that, that was also a part of it. So that between those two things, it did make the, it, it did change the outlook. We do tend to update these very regularly. Every time there's a significant event, if you will, that impacts what that pro forma and financial projection looks like, we do update it. And we meet regularly with Be Proud staff, or, you know, with the, with Shannon and city staff and go through, you know, financial performance and financial outlook. We, we meet on a monthly basis to go through all those numbers, and it does change. I mean, it, it does. We continue to procure going forward, look, looking for dips in the energy market so that we can take advantage when prices do dip down. And so there's just a lot of variables that go into it, and it's very fluid.
And, and that is my concern, Shannon, that, that there's a lot of variables, right? We went from, I went from March to now. I mean, I understand that there's variables, but we went from $3 million to over 4.5 million in three months. You know, when this is money that's coming out of our general fund, and we're talking about a $1.5 million plus increase in just a three-month projection, makes me question how accurate these projections are and how often are these projections going to change? And if we're trying to establish a way how we're going to make up the money that we need to, to cover, that's going to be coming out of our general fund, and these projections keep on increasing the way they have been, how are we ever going to catch up? I mean, we're going to be spending over 4.5 million dollars in the next three years. And yet, from year 2025 to the year 2030, we're going to make $3,714,000 in revenue. We're still going to be out $878,000 deficit. So in 10 years, we're not even going to make back what we're spending in the first three years. And if these projections keep on increasing, that's, you know, this is a lot of money. So how are we going to know how accurate these projections are? You know, I mean, these, these are the concerns that I've had from day one. You know, I don't know if any of my other colleagues have any questions or concerns, but this is, this is concerning to me that we don't have, you know, we don't have accurate amounts. We're increased now one, over 1.5 million from our general fund. We don't have this type of money in our general fund to just be spending.
Mayor, may I?
Oh, if I could just clarify, please, Mayor Protem, we're not recommending that this come out of the general fund. Be Proud is a separate entity. It should be run like an enterprise fund, similar to a water company. So yeah, we're not, we're not recommending that the, any of these funds come out of the general fund. And, and you are correct, with any tenure projection, we're looking into the future. And, and it's everybody's best guess, the expert's best guess, and it's going to change, you know, as we get closer to the timelines that we're projecting.
So Shannon, really quick, so if it's not coming out of our general fund, where are we going to get the money from? Are we going to have to take a loan out to, to cover this four-plus million dollars? Or how are we going to, I mean, I know one of our options is increasing the rates to our residents. But what other options do we have to make up for this, for this loss? If it's not coming out of our general fund, where is it going to come out of?
So we're recommending tonight the small increase in the rate, only the generation rate. It's one cent kilowatt hour more than Edison. And if that's approved, there will be no deficit. The council doesn't want to take that action, the option may be to loan the money from the general fund to Be Proud, but that's not what we're recommending. um, from the general fund to Be Proud, um, but that's not what we're recommending.
And if we increase the rates, is it going to cover the four point five million dollars deficit that we have? Or is this only going to cover for twenty twenty two?
No, this will cover. And again, you know, we'll have to look at the rates next year and energy rates are going to change. Uh, w- we could be in a much better position next year, depending on, you know, what happens with the market and the energy rate and Edison's rate. Um, and the exit. So, um, yes.
Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, Shannon, can you put that chart back up, please, that you had? I want to say that when all this was presented originally, um, there was a lot of concerns and and I voted, I voiced my concern on that. I never saw these projections of us losing money until now. This is the first time I see these projections. The way it was presented, it was that it would benefit our our residents, it would benefit the city, we would be making money. But um, I had done the math as well as Mr. Damian, and in the next five years, we're not going to be making up the amount of money that we're going to be losing in the next four years. So that is extremely concerning to me and why these ten year projection was not presented originally. I don't know why it wasn't presented. Again, it was presented very differently, um. And it was presented in a way that it was a win-win situation for everybody. And now looking at this, it's not a win-win situation for everybody, especially if we have to increase the rates for our residents. Or enter, we have to borrow money from uh, general funds to make up the loss of, of revenue. So I, I don't understand how how we can see see a beneficial when, when you start a business. I, I know most businesses lose money when you start, but this is a large amount of money and it's not our money. It's our residents' money that we're losing. So I, I am extremely concerned with this, especially because I never saw these uh, that's ten year projections. It was never presented to us. That's all, Mayor. Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia?
Thank you. Uh, I missed the last council meeting and I'm just getting up to speed. So I have a question for Shannon. Um, what are the exit fees that were? I, I understand that more recently what has kind of changed. The, the game here is S C E is, has now introduced exit fees. Am I understanding that correctly?
There were always exit fees, um, but they have lobbied this P U C recently um, to increase them. Um, now that's one of the processes that the cities, the C C A cities are going to be banding together. Um, and probably when the city council originally looked at this, um, over a year ago. Um, those exit fees were lower at that time.
Do you remember what the difference, like what it was proposed at that time and what it is now?
Um, I don't have that. I'm not sure Kathy, if you know off the top of your head, if not, we can get you that information.
I don't. Um, Brian Goldstein is here on the line. He may know, he's the one who actually.
Yeah, good, good evening, Councilmembers. It, it's about uh, doubled, um, since I think the first analysis was done in late twenty eighteen for Baldwin Park.
Okay, and I also had a lot of questions and I had, I had expressed some concerns. There were numerous presentations and my next question is directed to our deputy city clerk, Lord this Morales. If you can if you can look through our minutes and if the agendas and you can pull the material and the presentations. That were given to the city council on this topic, I would like to look at that. I would like to review that. Um, because I, I, I did try to uh, search for that information and we're looking at two thousand nineteen, so that's two years ago now. Um, and we started having conversations, you know, prior to that. So I would think two thousand eighteen, maybe two thousand seventeen. But I'd like to look, review all that information. Um, because what I understood at the end of, of all the questions and all the analysis and all the presentations was that if we opted into the C C A, um, this J P A, that we would be able to kind of establish our own um, utility. And we anticipated and we projected having surplus revenues that we could then use for um, programs and services in our city. That was the main benefit. I don't think that any one of us was looking to create our utility, you know, just for the sake of it. Um, that was really the, the benefit and I, I do recall that the city of Pico Rivera had recently done that and Lancaster. Um, at the time, I think we were going to be the third in that J P A, but then, you know, thereafter, there were other cities that joined in. Um, the idea was again, that we were going to be able to generate the revenues, there would be a surplus. Uh, we would be able to recycle those, tho- that fun, those funds into our community. And that the rates would either match or be below S C E rates. So I want to understand, like, you know, why things have changed pretty drastically, it seems. Um, and I'm just stepping into this, like I said, I missed the last council meeting. So I would like for us to look at, you know, what was presented. There were numerous presentations. Um, there's material. And there are many questions asked. Um, I'd like to understand, you know, kind of where we've come from to this point and really compare like, okay, what what was presented to us, is that actually what's happening here now? Because I don't, I, I'm not prepared to just willy nilly um, raise rates without us fully understanding. You know, kind of I, I'm, I'm not fully understanding why there's such a disparity from where we are today as far as you know, now we're looking at increasing the rates and then you know, that wasn't the, that, that was never the discussion. The discussion was that the rates were going to stay the same or be below S C E rates. Um, so I want to understand that disparity. I want to understand that more before I make a decision. Um, that's going to have an impact long term. I do, I do understand that, you know, we also don't want to get into a deficit situation. But you know, if what was presented to us in the past is not ma- not matching up to where we are today, we really need to take a close look at that. And um, and see, you know, what, what were we sold and, and what is actually, you know, being delivered? So I'd like us, if, you know, if we can bring this back and with all that information from our deputy city clerk. Um, and really, you know, try to match this up because it's not adding up for me right now. Thank you.
Mayor?
Mayor, if I could just answer one, uh, try to answer that question. Um, and I think, I think we touched on that and the major differences from two thousand eighteen when this was initiated. Um, would be that the exit fees approximately doubled. Um, and then, you know, the energy market is fluctuating a lot more, so that makes a lot more uncertainty in our ten year projections. So if you look at the exit fee right here. Um, and if it was at thirteen cents, um, that would be, that would make our bottom line rate um, thirteen cents kilowatt hour, we, we would be half the cost of Edison. So that right there is the major difference from the change from two thousand eighteen. And again, that's why we're fighting it. And lobbying the state legislature to get that to go down sooner and faster.
Yeah, and, and if, if I may, um, add one thing, Shannon. Councilmember, when, there's a lot of things that we do have control over and there are some things that we we, and when I say we, I mean Be Proud, do not have control over. Um, and the C I A is something that the, the um, Southern California Edison puts together based on um, you know, a proceeding that they present to the Public Utilities Commission. And then forward energy prices, as we said, are, are volatile right now and um, in all likelihood, those will come down. Um, which will change the outlook again, however, it will, that will change the outlook to become more favorable. Um, the things that that Be Proud does have control over, the procurements, um, the regulatory activity, things of that nature. The implementation of the programs, the program is um, you know, it, it's managed quite well. Uh, and I, I'm not saying that from Cal choice's perspective, but from Baldwin Park's perspective. Uh, Baldwin Park is doing everything right with this program. It's those things that are out of Baldwin Park's control that are impacting uh, this right now, so.
So, and I, I do want to say that I understand that, um, yes, I do understand market volatility and fluctuations. Um, but again, what was sold to us was that our rates would be at or below S C E rates. And if that's not the case, then I think we need to revisit. And I think we need to look at this more closely. Um, because it's not, it doesn't, it's, I'm not prepared to put this on the residence. Um, at this point in time, so. Go ahead, I heard somebody speaking, go ahead.
I believe it was Mayor Protam.
Yes, a- and um, just to touch back on Councilmember, Councilmember Garcia. Uh, i- it is a good, good idea to go back and look at what was presented because like I said, this ten year pr- projection, I do not recall being presented because that is an immediate red flag. Also, were we informed that there was no control and that these uh, increase, increase would probably happen to our residents or to our city. Uh, was the information clear or was it just vague enough uh, to sell it to us? Because it sounded good because we were told that we were going to benefit by providing programs to our community or matching the, either a lower price or the price with Southern California Edison. So with this projection, i- it just makes me think, what was really presented to us? So it is very important to look at that information because it doesn't match what I recall. Um, I think this started back in twenty seventeen and, and it just uh, continued, it was long conversations and I recall a lot of people coming in uh, to question the process, but this is not what I recall. So I, I definitely need more clarification. I, I feel we weren't presented what we're looking at now.
Mayor, if I may? Shannon or Kathy, were, was the city council aware, when this, when this program was first brought to the city council, I don't know what year it was. That they voted to bring this program in or, or accepted. Were they aware or were you guys aware that, that the residents were going to be paying exit fees from S C E?
Exit fees have always been part of the equation, um, from the beginning. I will say that things look significantly different now than they did when um, when we were first talk, speaking with, with Baldwin Park about the program and it's, it's that is a statewide situation. It's um, it's affecting all of the C C As in the state of which there are, I believe, twenty four, you know, as Shannon mentioned, two hundred, over two hundred cities. Um, they're all in this position where they are being impacted by um, the increase of the exit fee and having to raise their rates. Now, there are some C C As that have been around longer than others and have gone through a cycle like this and then it has come back down again where they have been less than their incumbent utility. And um, you know, it's, it's, i- it's something that they have gone through. I don't think um, the market is just so different. I just, I, I, you know, I can't, I wa- I wasn't part of the um, I don't recall the presentation. I wasn't part of the team that did the presentation, so. But I do know that, I do know that what we tell cities that we're talking to is that um, you can never guaran- you can't make guarantees when it's related to rates. You can say we have goals and this is what we want and as time goes on, those become um, more achievable, more easily. I- it's easier to stay there because that P P A, as I mentioned, drops down. So the, the further along the path you get, the less impact that P C I has on your rate setting. So the, you know, it, you know, while there is, you know, volatility along the way, it is going to trend down.
Got it. And Shannon, was this ten year projection presented when, when this was, when this program was presented? Was this ten year pr- projection with these similar numbers presented to the council? Did they know that there was going to be a deficit the first three years and, and all of this before they made the decision or? Because I mean, honestly, if this was presented, I mean, it seems like none of my colleagues are even aware that this ten year projection existed and if this was presented to me to vote on this program, I would have said absolutely not. The city is not financially in a place right now where we have the luxury to say, let's become C C As in our own public utility commission and we have the luxury to, you know, to lose four point five million dollars in the first three years. And still wait ten years to not even recuperate the money that we're spending, you know? Financially, the city is not in a place where it can attain this. So those are my concerns. Listening to my colleagues, Councilmember Garcia and Vice Mayor Abina that were here back then when this happened. It concerns me that they weren't aware of these projections, number one, and number two, what in fact was brought and presented to the council to sell them on this, to vote for this. Because if this wasn't presented the way it should have been done, then it's a different conversation that we need to have because this is concerning to me.
So as I recall, there was a ten year projection. Obviously, things were different then. As you heard, exit fees were almost half of what they are now. Um, so I do recall there was a ten year projection. We will pull it up and see what exactly was uh, sent to city council. Um, obviously, it was a different projection. I re- do recall, you know, that the first year, a few years were a break even or even coming ahead a little bit. Um, I think I misspoke a little bit earlier, but again, if you did look at this chart with the exit fees and the exit fees were cut in half. We would be at the exact same rates um, with Edison today. But we will get that, we, we will do that research and get you that information.
Yeah, and to be honest with you, right now, the rates are kind of my, the least of my worries. Uh, because you know, whichever residents wanted to stay with the S C E can stay with the S C E, who wants to, whoever wants to opt out of the program can do so. They still have a remedy for that. We as a city, we don't. We don't have the remedy to say, you know what, let's just go ahead and disregard this and we're not going to spend the four point five million dollars. We're already binding to this. So to me, my biggest concern is the amount of money that we as a city are going to be out for the next three years or the next ten years. In reality, because we're not going to even recoup that in, in the year twenty thirty. So to me, that's my biggest concern, that we are the, we are the ones responsible for this money. And now it's up to us to figure out a way how we're going to come out, four point five million, hoping that in the next three to six months, another ten year projection don't come out and then that four point five million will increase to nine million. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
And just to add, if I would have known that we were going to be losing money and paying out money, there is no way in the world I would have voted for this. Again, it was presented in a way that benefited everybody and, and this is just not benefiting anybody. It wasn't presented as a gamble. It wasn't presented as, as something that, oh yes, we may lose a million, two, three million dollars. It wasn't presented that way, that I do know. Because I know for a fact, I would have said no. And I originally, originally uh, was against the, the project. But then presentations came coming up and it was sold that we would bring our programs to the city and it would benefit us. So the way it was presented, it looked really good. And what I'm looking at now, it's not at all what I recall. So thank you.
Right, thank you. So, um, it seems that uh, my colleagues have all their comments out of uh, comments and questions out of the way. I don't know if there's any more comments or questions from staff?
Uh, no, thank you, Mayor, but the item is on at seven o'clock for consideration. Um, we do need to open the public hearing. If you still have more, need more information at that time. Um, you know, we could conduct the hearing and then you know, we could conduct the hearing and then hold it over till the next meeting to give staff time to get the information that was requested.
Thank you. Okay. So at this moment, I believe we are ready to move on. So we, at this point, are ready to move on to closed session. So I believe I will see some of you in our next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you. Good night.